Alright, everyone, good evening. I'm calling the meeting to order. It is now 7:05 PM. First up on the agenda is if there are any agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes?
Any additions or corrections, anybody?
We were going to talk about the town garage site. I can give a bit of a synopsis on that. I wish that Jim was here and I wish I didn't forget the drawings.
Why don't we put that down? That's kind of part of the Wednesday wind down, isn't it? That garage synopsis, isn't it?
No, it's what we would like to do with the existing site if and when the town garage moves out there.
When I heard that, that you and Jim had something about the town garage, I thought it might have been what he heard from folks at the wind down. So that's my fault. Okay. We can put that down under item 3.5?
Sure.
Or 4.5?
4.5.
Either before or after the?
After. Be great.
Wednesday wind.
Okay, so agenda change. We're going to talk about the town garage.
Is that Jim?
He forgot.
Oh, wow.
Well, then we should put him maybe at...
Okay, great. And so if there are no other agenda changes, then we'll move on to item number two, which is to review and approve the previous minutes.
They were sent to you on Friday, but if you give me a chance to look at them, they're in your folders.
I guess only two people are here who are here at the meeting to approve.
Michelle and myself and Jim Pratt.
And Jim will be here.
Jim will be here.
Sanford.
I was not here, so I will abstain.
Okay.
It was just you and Macon, I think, who were not at the last meeting. I'll read Jim's minutes, just so I can make sure. Oh, he's not reading. Okay.
This is not really a pulling tag. Do you have a pencil, so I can remember it?
Of course.
Thanks, Ruth.
You want a big pencil?
You have like a marking of...
No.
What is this? Oh, cool. Okay, I got one, Ruth.
No, I was gonna give you this one. You remind me of having a big pencil in second grade.
Thank you.
Well, you won't get far with it.
Yeah.
I wasn't there.
Got your eyes on it?
Yeah.
It was free.
So it's like, it was great. Sorry to miss the website and data stuff, but also hearing Mac Rude and his experience.
Yeah.
Well, there's, I mean, could I ask, there's just like some headlines from that that jumped out to y'all from that?
Yeah, sure. So he kind of described his process of how he applied with Waitsfield Township and got a PUD in order and how
PUD?
planned unit development.
Okay.
So basically taking his 10-acre property, that's called the Waitsfield 10,
Yep.
and subdividing it into smaller parcels. And what he did was he sort of, there were like the 10 parcels that were subdivided out and for all of those future homeowners, he had engineered like the driveway system, the turnaround area, the wastewater treatment facility, so the septic tanks out to the leach field and the electrical and the well locations, so that and kind of just sold off all these parcels with that infrastructure in place at cost, like at the flat rate, whatever he put into that is what he sold off the properties to. And then each little small parcel was able to be bought by people who make 80% or below median income of the town of Waitsfield, I believe. So it's like an affordable housing initiative. And so anyone who buys into these lots has to have a specific income standard and that allows people to sort of have good like starter homes or even forever homes and kind of gets people's roots sunken into the community. I think it's a really good example of what can be done.
With PUDs.
With PUDs. And that kind of got our wheels turning on like, what can we do with the town garage site that might be similar to that initiative? You know, there's the developer route. We could go with someone like Downstreet and see, and we already know what that route holds because we've had those meetings and we kind of know what they are looking for and what they can provide in terms of housing. But speaking with Mac, it was just sort of like an eye-opener of like, hey, we have all these resources in our community that are sort of unique to this place, you know, with how many creative thinkers and designers there are and just gung-ho community members that want to see positive change.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, it kind of, it got Jim and I a little bit motivated to go over to the town garage site and walk it physically and see what it is and what it could possibly potentially hold and what other options there may be. So, yeah, that's the brief synopsis.
It's awesome.
What is, do you know, Mac Rude, did he retain ownership of something, like when there's a PUD?
Yeah.
Or is like increased density because of common ownership?
Setting aside.
Yeah, like what's the business model, like at a very basic level?
There was some additional acreage. What's, I can't remember what the total acreage was on that, but...
Yeah, there is some open acreage that was just like undevelopable because it's like in a floodplain, it's right by the Mad River. And so that's just kind of like, I guess that's his own property.
Each deed will say, you got a quarter of an acre fee, like you own it.
Yeah.
Plus you get 25% of this other lot that like no one's gonna touch, but it's owned by like the Waitsfield 10 Association or something like that. So it's probably, like if you want to look at the deeds and see what they say, to see like kind of on paper what the ownership structure is.
Yeah.
But that's, just to get into nitty-gritty, I think each person gets to own something, but then they get a portion, a percentage of their house. There's a common land.
I think there's something like that. I'm not, I'm not privy to the exact like structure of that.
Yeah.
But there's gotta be something to that effect. Yeah.
I mean, it's really cool. And I mean, this is not to say there, there's a lot to learn from it, but it's just so I understand it. He, it was, it's private land.
Yeah.
Then he then used for this, which is now like, I guess owned by the organization that people, all that. But like this, right, okay, so that's just like a major difference. Otherwise, like, all these services.
Yeah. Well, he bought it when he sold his house up here.
And Sam and Chrissy own one of the lots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he avoided, and he avoided, you know, the Downstreets and everybody else. He did it on his dime.
Sorry. That's okay. We've done agenda changes, which added you and Adam talking about garage. Added that. We've reviewed the previous minutes and you're usually good about reading them before you come in. Do you mean to look at the minutes or no?
Can you vote on?
Not yet.
No.
We haven't approved them yet.
And you were just talking about Mac and what we went from.
Yeah, Macon had asked a question, so Adam filled him in.
I need to know what's the deal with this. This was not on the agenda.
Zucchini bread, delicious.
Made by...
It's good. Okay. I bet it's so good. I bet it's so good. Over the top, good. Yeah. Oh, it's zucchini. This is, this is how, this is the only way I eat zucchini these days. Did you, is this zucchini from your garden? Are you a gardener?
It's a family zucchini.
Went to brunch with my sister and brother-in-law the other day and as we were leaving, they were shoving zucchinis and everybody started...
Yeah.
It's the usual.
Alright.
Somebody trying to get rid of a baseball bat.
This is great. Thank you. Looks good to me.
So I was kind of thrown off because I wasn't here for the meeting, but, so he calls it the Folsom Brook? Like it's near the Folsom Brook, but everyone calls it the Waitsfield 10?
Yeah, I don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
I have no idea. I think it's Waitsfield 10. I'm confused whether it's the Waitsfield 10 just because there's 10 acres of property there or there are 10
He says there's nine lots.
Being developed there.
I think it was 10 acres.
Nine lots on a 10-acre site, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because 10 was...
What is it, off of Folsom Brook Road?
Okay.
Do you want to put out a motion for the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of meeting from Monday, August 11. Can I go? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And Michelle is saying aye. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so approved. Thank you. Moving on to the next, next agenda topic, number three, which is general public comment. Do we have anyone from the public who would like to comment on anything under the sun?
We have members of the public, but no comment, I guess.
No comment.
Not comment.
Okay, in that case, let's move on to agenda number four, the summary of the Wednesday wind down and the plans going forward.
Now, one thing I want to add that you'll find in your folders is a note from Rebecca. She and Devon kind of did their own little feedback on the wind down last week. So I just thought I'd bring that to your attention and any conversation about the wind down.
Right?
Yeah.
We all got that.
Yeah. I saw the email from Rebecca. I
Responded to it.
I almost responded to it, but I think it's in my drafts. Did I respond?
No, you didn't respond.
Your response, I was gonna say. I thought it was that one.
Yeah, you responded.
Yeah, you responded to her.
Yeah.
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 Maybe you just said and didn't know.
Great job, Adam. Which one was it? Was it me saying, no alcohol beyond this point?
That stuff, but you were also saying, you know, you appreciated her making these comments and, and we're thinking, we probably won't be able to do another one this year, but maybe, and that kind of stuff.
Okay, well then, that's my comments about that. Thank you all for joining it. Basically, I just said, those were really good items. Because like, yes, we did rope off the place, but no one knows what the ropes are for.
Yeah.
So if you just have signs every once in a while that says, no drinking beyond this point, then people know.
I think there was the potential. I'm not sure that either of them, Devon or Rebecca, saw anybody with beer in their hands that was outside of the green, but I think it was one of those things that they felt that needed to be more clearly delineated.
Yeah. And just more eyes on the gates, people walking in and out.
The nice thing about it is it could be expanded and contracted based on the number of people who we expect, you know? I think next time we do it, we can publicize it in the Valley Reporter. We might get some people from out of town, out of town, which would be nice.
Yeah.
And then we just bring all those booths back, you know, into the driveways and stuff and have the whole green be, you know, open, which would be really nice.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd say...
I thought the band sounded fantastic in the, in the, in the Gazette book, too.
The band was great. And they were just getting warmed up when we were leaving at eight. I feel like they took their time warming up.
Yeah.
And then they were jamming between like seven and eight, it seemed like. I would say like working with the group was really nice, having a small group, because I feel like you three really did everything in terms of the food vendors. Michelle got the food vendors.
But thanks.
Sam got the band, which was such, it was just serendipity, it seemed like, that they were playing at the Mad River TV station.
Yeah.
It was great.
And that they were willing to come for free.
Yeah.
Ooh, that's weird.
Yeah. And then Michelle was able to get the food vendors to contribute to the, just giving the band money. But they, they said, we're gonna show up no matter what, and they did. And they were wonderful.
Yeah.
I think like getting to know the town resources would be really nice because with Ruth and I, when we pulled out that table, I saw the space below the old town hall, like where you keep things, like there's tables down there. And so if we were to do this again, I'd get together with the volunteers. We'd make our signs and be like, these are the wind down signs. Like this is the alcohol area, this is the explanation of parking, because I wanted to enforce parking more, like I wanted to be true to what we all talked about in front of this like board of like, we're gonna try to keep people off the street. But people just were parking down this street.
Oh, yeah.
And like the couple of people that stopped and talked to me were like, okay, we'll go up. One car went up to the cemetery and came back down and said it was too far to walk, which was hilarious. I enjoyed it. I parked up there, a couple of people parked up there.
Yeah.
But I'd like that to, I'd like people just use the resources that we have more and not park in the road if we don't have to. And so that would be, I really want to work on signage and like getting parking barriers and, you know, just telling people like, this is acceptable to park up here.
Yeah, just on the parking thing, yeah, I definitely agree that whatever you can do to get people, you know, off, parking off the street. The only thing I will add is, Jenny, there was some confusion about this. I know you and I talked about it.
Yeah.
The group needs to get permission specifically from the Cemetery Commission.
Yeah.
The town doesn't control that. And if Charlie happens to be doing something up there that day, he may be disconnected from it. So the next time you want to do it, you need to come to Cemetery Commission and get the commission. Jeff said he did not give permission. So he, that was exactly me.
Okay. Yeah, so one of our planning will be, what's the parking permission?
Yeah.
And then how do we enforce what the parking plan is?
Yeah.
And what access do we have to barriers, if any, to put out or, you know, signage to put out? Like what's the best way to promote that parking plan?
I don't recall, but was there parking on both sides of Main Street? Was it limited to just one?
From what I saw.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I know I looked down that way, but I wasn't, yeah, okay.
I wonder if you could just put, you know, cones along the edge or some sort of something.
You know, I, I know that Jeff was saying that you shouldn't be parking on Main Street.
Yeah.
But I think of Jim, Sanford over here, who says, well, it just slows people down.
Well, and it's funny because I spoke, I talked to Jeff as I was driving down, as I was leaving. And I said, you know, how's it going? And he pointed out, the cars parked there. And just as we were talking, he said, although it's supposed to slow people down. And a car flew past us and he's like, but it's not working.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, people were still flying through town, even though it was narrow, you know? We're parked literally on the road and, so.
What is it about Warren Village that makes people want to fly?
So there are barriers or there's fence, you know, wire fences, eight-foot sections up near the skate park that are available if we need them.
Okay.
We, we used them when we did the...
So who would they contact to follow?
You would just drive up there and throw them in your truck and bring them down and then put them back when they're done. Rec committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
See, they didn't do that.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
We let them know, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then cones? Does the rec committee have cones? Like who do we talk to? Cunningham? Okay.
Okay. Yeah, and then dogs. I know dogs, yeah.
That was a surprise to me that people showed up with dogs.
I think it would be...
I mean, I let Charlie do a lot of things and I didn't, I was like, no, I'm not gonna bring my dog to this.
My things are too crazy to bring anywhere, but I understand that people want to come places with their dogs.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the reason, I asked, I said that because I noticed that the dogs were there and they were almost all, not all on leashes. And she goes, that's true, but it was a kind of event and it was just, shall we say, crowded enough that, especially when you've got a lot of little kids and, and a dog may not be necessarily aggressive, but they could still kind of intimidate somebody, you know?
Well, when I first got there, I think I was talking to you about it, I had that exact moment. Some guy walked in with his dog on leash, another guy walked in with his dog, it was written actually. And, and, you know, they were both on leashes and the dogs kind of, they're like, okay. And the first one went aggressive and started like, they went after the other one. And the guy said to the, to written, it's because your dog is on a leash. And I thought, if you know that your dog's on a leash, another dog's gonna be on leash, and that's aggressive. So that, that was a moment where I thought, we need somebody who's saying,
Yeah.
either leave your dogs at home or your dogs need to be...
I remember somebody saying...
I think what will happen is if we have an event in the future, we could politely ask people, leave your dogs at home, but people will still bring their dogs.
Yeah.
And so in that sense, it'd be nice to just have them have a little mini dog wind down. Just say, go to the dog park.
Yeah.
Go hang out with all the other dog owners in the dog park, I guess. I don't know.
And they're doing that, so it's good.
I think that's what I...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure.
I don't know that we actually can ban dogs on public property.
Okay, well then.
The town ordinance applies, which is the leash rules.
Right.
Could you have like a section to promote, like this is the dog area, this is the animal area?
And you're creating a dog park in the middle of a concert.
I think just as long as you're willing to speak to people whose dogs are, you know, aren't...
Please think twice before bringing your dog to this event.
Yeah. It's not a huge space.
Yeah, okay. Well, that, that, right, I felt weird causing like a no-dog policy at the event.
Yeah.
Because it seems a bit restricted. It seems a bit much. But yeah, I don't know. Like it's, it's touchy.
I, I did talk...
I liked your suggestion. Please don't bring your dog.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And just leave it at that?
Because you know there'll be somebody that says...
You can still push them.
They say, please, you know, boy, that's, that's a bummer that you'd...
Yeah.
That's right. Someone will still bring it, some, you know, and then one of their friends will be like, hey, play it away. And they'll feel crappy.
Yeah.
And they won't bring them again.
Maybe.
Probably works.
I don't know.
I spoke to both of the food vendors who seemed, I said, how'd you do? Was this worth your while, basically? And Grace said that, I think, you know, it could have been more, but it was enough that she felt good about it. And of course, living here in the village, she was really happy to be here.
Yes, yeah.
And the other folks, the Dino Bones, they were very nice about it, but they do bigger stuff.
Yeah.
And I think he said they had like 50, 50 meals that they...
That's it?
Yeah.
Is that good or bad?
Yeah, I talked to them too. They were like, Dino Bones was hoping for a bit more.
Yeah.
Gracie's was like, okay, yeah, it was worth my while.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That liquor guy?
Yeah, the local. Sam was very stoked on it. He's like, this is great. I sold out of all my stuff.
Sam Rosenberg.
Good turnout.
He didn't have enough of the high, the best stuff, he said. I think...
Really?
He made a comment to me about, because I sold out of the really good stuff early, you know, kind of thing, the most popular stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a little bit weird because like now, where do we go? Like are we expecting to possibly have another event and have similar-sized vendors expecting a slightly bigger turnout?
They could promote for themselves too, if we give them enough time.
Yeah.
And they could make that choice. I think just telling people that they have to support the vendors if they want the events to happen again.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure people were like, yeah, I'll come out and listen to music and like have a drink, but didn't feel like buying a meal.
Yeah.
But yeah, they're not gonna get food vendors if they don't buy something.
I've been 20% of them well, once you tell them to. These are so great for like the second time around.
Do you guys have any idea how many, is there any way to get a count?
Yeah, did anyone get to do a head count?
Michelle, did Carson actually do a count or was he just guessing?
No, nope, nobody counted.
What was your guess?
150?
It just seems...
That sounds big.
Yeah, I would say...
What was the turnout, I think?
Yeah.
Michelle said 150 people.
Oh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have guessed that many, but maybe.
I would have guessed 70 to 90, maybe?
Yeah.
I want time.
We had, we had, yeah, 38 people go through the barn.
Okay.
That's great.
So I want to say 3X more than that or there.
Yeah.
36, 900. Just about 100.
Yeah.
Just about 100. And I was out for a couple hours when it could have been...
There were more people on the barn. Did you all have like an email sign up or anything? Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, Jim, Jim, how many people, did you notice how many people signed up for the listserv, like?
I, well...
Actually, Michelle and Kayla did it. And it was a page and almost a half. So that's like 30-some of them.
Haley, she's the selectwoman tonight.
Right, Kayla.
She went around with the thing and said, hey, and a bunch of people at, at the desk that I was manning signed up.
Good, yeah.
You know?
Yeah, and I pass this on to Rebecca.
You know, I, I just said, hey, if you're interested in keeping up the date, here it is.
Yeah.
That, that hearse was cool. I never saw that hearse in there. Is that a new addition or?
No, that's been there forever.
That's one they've ever, just never goes.
So how many ice creams did you go through? Was it only 38 ice creams in terms of the ice creams that you had?
Oh, I only had, I ended up giving, I had 50 ice creams. I ended up giving away six if you can, for one person.
Yeah. I was there for that. So it's good, yeah.
Well, one, one more?
Well, thanks, everyone. I think it was a really great learning experience.
For the first time, amazing.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Michelle.
Oh, I have a friend who was at the event and is very interested in helping if we want to do more events. It's Josh Morse, who some of you might know, but he, I think, was like really impressed with it and he really wants to be involved and help out if we do another one. So he wanted to come to the meeting.
He's a, he's a music teacher, too.
Yeah, I guess.
He also does like other...
Didn't he have a food truck up that went on at one time?
Michelle, that's great.
Yeah, I was, was there like, did we land anywhere as far as are we doing another one or is it looking like not soon?
I hope so. I mean...
I mean, I...
Why not?
I...
Have gosh, if any more...
Look, I think we could pull off another one like next month, maybe? Just to kind of keep some momentum.
Around, um, around Columbus Day, you know, when the leaves are all going nuts and everything like that.
Yeah, that could be nice.
Beginning of October, you think? Would be better than...
Yeah.
Like a separate weekend in October, something like that.
Yeah, well, it's like...
Do you want to do it during the week or on a week first?
I hope the week thing is really good. Wind down Wednesday.
Wind down Wednesday.
And Michelle, you got the, you were the organizer with the vendors. So what is your feeling of how long it would take you if you wanted to reach out to people again or post on Front Porch Forum? Would you do it beginning of October?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like Wednesdays are pretty easy and maybe we get Gracie again and then try to get one other group of similar size to her and not, you know, with a similar like volume. Like maybe Dino Bones was too big. I didn't know that. They didn't ask me how many people were expected or tell me that they only do big things. So that was surprising.
Yeah.
But maybe we could find... I talked to Michael and they were very into it, but they were busy, so I could...
Do you want to see October 8th, Wednesday, October 8th, if Michael's is, is good to go, then we should do it.
Can I?
Oh, you should, yeah. If you could get, if you could get Flanagan, that would be really good.
That's the dumpling cart?
Yeah. Maybe they leave open the first or the 8th? And I propose two dates to Gracie and Michael's and then...
Can you, can you first check with the fire department? Because if it's a training night for them, it's not a great, it's not gonna work well for them.
Yeah, that's right.
They usually have more folks at training.
Yeah, it wasn't crazy that...
I think it was truck, it might have been truck night tonight.
Truck maintenance, yeah.
Yeah, so if it's a regular training, that's how they're gonna be.
Do they have a schedule posted?
They're second and fourth Wednesdays, I think, because that's when our meetings are and they're the same.
Okay, so then 10/1 and then not 10/8, because that would be the second Wednesday. So 10/1 or 10/15?
Okay, I think 10/15, it could be 30 degrees. I feel like, let's just see if we can pull it up or...
You go fire going.
Yeah, fire. Oh, like the library.
Fire department is very trained. They're like on top of it, you know?
Does the library do something with fire on Halloween?
Yeah, we got fire, got firemen, firemen right there.
Also, we don't want to be close to Halloween, too, because that's like a...
Yeah, that's right. You don't want to close to Halloween.
Yeah, so probably 10/1 then.
Yeah, let's shoot for ten one maybe.
Love it.
And um I guess I have two questions. One, would anyone else like to join the planning committee? We'll have Josh, Michelle, Jenny.
I'd be happy to help, yeah.
Okay, Macon, probably Sam Gabriel's will help again. I'll I'll have to ask Sam, myself. Anyone else wanna join in on it? Okay, cool. Um do we still have the support of the Historical Society also? Great. And we would have to go to the select board again for another event permit?
Yeah, I I had suggested to this group earlier on that they, if they want to do more than one, to go and get the permit from you guys. For X number of dates. But I think.
Devon said no.
Yeah, and I think it makes sense to you to do a trial.
Well, no, we said we wanted multiple dates and Devon's like, I'll give you one date.
And then.
That's what I remember.
Yeah, and depending on how the one goes in October, I think you can decide what you wanna do next spring slash summer.
I think that's right. It might be a different approach for next year.
I also wanted to promote the actual like ceremony of the pavilion.
There's a separate date for that.
There's a separate date for that.
Yeah, in September.
I was just a little shy to get up on the mic, but it's September or something. For the actual.
It's a Saturday.
Uh acknowledgement of the the grand opening of the pavilion, the building.
And I believe it's on a Saturday, so I think it's Saturday the twentieth. Does that ring a bell to you, Kamal?
Probably something.
Yeah, that's a Saturday, September twentieth.
And I'm not sure of any of the details about that. I haven't been informed on that. But I do know it's September.
Okay, well, we'll find out, I'm sure, some way, flyer or something. Um but yeah.
Well, I I mean, as someone who missed it, I was out, you know, traveling, but everyone I've talked to was raved about it. And I saw Sam uh two days ago and he's really excited to be involved with it again, so just kudos. And I'll I'll just to single out Michelle in particular. I think this is a classic, someone just took initiative. And I remember being present at the creation of sort of one of these, hey, what do y'all think about things? And it's just great to see you, uh I mean, a group of you really deliver it. So kudos to you on that.
So I, but I also wanna stress, we 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 wanna do it on the green. We don't wanna have to go to Brooks.
Ten, I know that was so nice to just be right here.
We're gonna get some pressure on that. I don't know.
I think it should be on the green.
Already has activity and life and something going on up there. What we're trying to do is like.
Yeah, I don't know. This is intimate and what is perfect.
And that's the key. It's that whole success thing. When you do something and it's successful and there's so much pressure to make it bigger. And do it more and all that and and holding the line is what's gonna keep it.
Right, right. It's not too frequent. I know that one of the things that keeps coming in my mind in any marketing or advertising is the word community. That's not saying that anyone from Waitsfield or Granville or Moretown can't come. Because we want people, I mean, there are people who use.
People ask me that. Am I allowed to be here?
Yeah, of course, of course. Maybe the Warren wind down. Well, you had a whole bunch of Yestomorrow people who don't necessarily live in.
That was so nice that Yestomorrow showed up.
Yeah, exactly. And so it's, it, I don't, but I guess somewhere it's gotta be worded in such a way that we really want.
So here's the thing, in a way, the parking, if we actually manage the parking, it's going to kind of determine um what your max is. You know what I'm saying? No more people can come in. If if we manage the parking, it's gonna limit.
Well, that's why I tried to like put in the flyer like biking encouraged. Maybe I'll make it like bigger and more prominent. Like if all the people.
Say limited parking.
Limited parking, try to ride your bike here if you can. Or carpool, carpooling encouraged, biking encouraged, so that we can have like. Turnout without like massive sprawl of cars.
I mean, I purposely took my car home, so it'd be one less car.
Have you thought about a giant parking garage where the town garage is right now?
Yeah, yeah.
Just to support the wind down Wednesday.
Simpson's idea was to have a big parking garage under this parking lot. He wanted to dig that whole thing out and make parking underneath that.
Big dreamers.
That's when for when that baby, for when like fertility rates went up or something.
I love it. The town, the fire department is underneath that, so.
Yeah, that's pretty cool.
Just keep burrowing.
Speaking of, we can't forget about the time capsule. We gotta figure out when that's coming.
Uh you talked to the select board.
As long as, oh, the Historical Society, I mean, oh my goodness. Yeah, I just don't, okay, good. All right, other people are thinking about it, great.
Who is the cemetery commission?
It's Brent and Ju- Brent Adams and Julie, um and Julie Burns, myself. And Jeff Campbell and Charlie, so.
Okay, was Julie was there on Monday, wasn't she? Yeah, okay. Great, okay.
Okay, so if that's all for the wind down, I just have one more question. What would be the next select board meeting we can come to with an event? Um uh for the permit application for another one?
Um let's see, we have a meeting tomorrow, so that's the last one.
It would be the Tuesday after Labor Day week.
Second, second Tuesday, it'll be second Tuesday in.
Yeah, September.
Yeah, so the week after.
Jenny, you gonna get us on the agenda for that? Thank you. Awesome. All right, if that's all, then we can move on to our next agenda topic.
Which is four point five?
Four point five, which is the town garage. So when I said existing town garage, I meant what can we possibly do? With that site if and when the town garage moves out of there? Uh so a quick update from Jim and I. Um Jim and me, Jim and me. So Jim and me had walked the site, Jim and I had walked the sites.
So you inspire like grammar, Polish like.
Yeah, English is my second language, so here we go.
First language.
A little Polish, but yeah, architecture is my two point five.
Love language.
So we walked the site, uh we saw what it had to offer. And we think that there is a lot that can, there are a lot of possibilities um on that site. And Jim, do you wanna maybe talk through the little sketch you have there?
I can, I can. Um we just wanted to see how we felt about it, you know? It turns out that the town garage site and the whole of Brooks Recreation Field is one big piece of land, one parcel. So we got a lot of acreage here we could work. Um but on the town garage site, you know, we we went there with an eye towards what would, what's realistic? For this small place. And um uh so, you know, we're both architects. And so we we came up with an idea, just just so that we could have something to talk about. Um and we also went and, you know, everybody said they were gonna talk to somebody about um the possibilities. You know, somebody said, I think Ra- Dan said he was gonna talk to somebody at Sugar Bush or somebody was gonna talk to Lawson's. We went and talked to Britton at um Yestomorrow. And he was really enthusiastic about it. Um you know, he's working on the uh the intersection of uh Roxbury Mountain Road and uh the Brook Road.
It's just closed today. They closed on it today.
I got a whole group doing that. But the reality of it is this, this is a lot better suited for housing than even that is. I mean, I I don't wanna take away from his project, but this is, I mean, there's just so many good things about this site. And we know that there are forty five thou- fifty four thousand gallons or fifty four hundred gallons. Enough for forty or fifty more houses on the on the.
Wastewater system.
Wastewater, so so the wastewater is right there. There's no well yet, but it doesn't seem like that's a real problem. And then we took a look at it and uh so this is what we came up with. Which is, th- this is the site um here.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's the site.
This is where you drive up school?
Yeah, yeah. That's the school road site. And this is Lewis Pierce Road here. So that's what this is. This is a continuation of Lewis Pierce Road.
Okay, this is where that airstream is, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we envisioned closing this off completely. And then these, each one of these is a unit. So this is a duplex, this is a duplex, that's a duplex, that's a duplex, that's a duplex, that's a duplex, and that's a duplex. For a total of sixteen houses.
I would never look, see that. That's so cool.
And and this is a green with a circular thing. So these guys have their own little um, you know, uh community area. And they all live around this green for the most part. These guys are sort of a little more. And there's some trails that go up to the school and things like that. This is, you know, fifteen minutes worth of chit chat. And putting it down, but it does give you a visual. And and then and somebody could say, whoa. And with Mac, uh when Mac was in here, it it was kind of exciting to hear him talk about it. Because he said, you know, make some stuff available. You you can sell these things. You know, he he sold his place out, ten units or nine units.
Like hotcakes.
And uh he said, there's a real demand for for small stuff. And uh you know, maybe there's a way we could organize this. I mean, Britton was really enthusiastic about that. Maybe there's a way we can organize it so we don't get down the street with a big block of thirty houses.
So when you say Britton was excited, Yestomorrow, from what perspective?
Uh he just thought, he, A, he thought it was a great project and ideal. And he said, you know, we'd love to get involved in some way. I mean, we're not.
I didn't know, I didn't know if it was from the housing, like like.
Like he wanted to build something?
Yes, like maybe in housing and.
So right now, we're starting our semester program and our project is to build a instructor housing unit on campus. Because we have a hard time housing our staff. Um and so it's just like Yestomorrow has a need for housing their staff. Every other business and every other place around in the valley.
Has a need for housing their staff.
Need and that same struggle. So this could be an opportunity for, like we said, Lawsons or Sugar Bush or Yestomorrow. Or any of the roots builders um.
Or the school, the school wanted to hire another teacher and did hire another teacher, but then they couldn't find housing.
Town, yeah. You know, there's so many people looking for housing.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that that was um, you know, that's what we we s- it it. Uh the, what doesn't show up on this, either one of these aerial drawings, plans. Is that it's a very steep hill there that, but it could work out. So there's a garage below place and the two stories up above and the hillside and, I mean, there's a lot. But but I didn't feel, and I I think Adam shared this, we, the two of us didn't feel like. Um putting a lot more than that in there uh felt right. I mean, Lewis Pierce Road is this really small scale road. And you know, uh even sixteen seems, you know, that's that's quite a few cars and people. And things like that in there. But but um uh both of us felt like, hey, let's max. Let's let's talk about the maxing this. And and that's what felt about right to the two of us.
And like sixteen units, sixteen families, that's a, that's a substantial amount of housing provided for.
And that's a lot of cars and.
And it could be like, it's like a Warren type scale of.
Let me, let me just jump in with a few, uh get two two thoughts on this. This is awesome. Um and like, it's just cool to see like you inspired and go like to lay it out. Like the green is really cool. Like makes me wonder like, is that a public green? Is that like part of the thing? It's just so interesting to see like the different concepts. So. The thing that I also wanted just to say is that it it this conversation reminds me of when we first started talking about housing. And we started talking about the different kinds of local housing. You know, that that when we talk about housing access, there's actually things like senior housing. Or there's the first homeowner housing, or there's um worker housing, right? It's rental housing. And to me, it does not surprise me that you start from the standpoint of like designing something that's great. Like and and it makes it helpful to see something. But it it for me, it provokes a response of like, what is the overall goal? Not the real estate goal, but like as a community, what's the most important kind of housing we want? And that's, I feel like, the kind of input that seems like the logical next step of of this. And certainly something for the select board as well, but.
That's exactly correct. You know, several people have said, what's the town's vision of what they want this to be? And what would the town be offering? Are they gonna say, you know, you can tie into our septic system? Are they gonna say you can have the land free? Are they gonna say, we want a lot of money? You know, what what's, what's gonna be the town? What's the town gonna say about this to to potential investors or buy-in people or whatever? And that, and that's right. What what is the town's vision? Is it, is it for people to buy these places and live there? Or is it for them to rent them? I mean, several people came up to me during the, during the um roundup thing. You know, they were saying, well, what's gonna happen to the, as long as there's no STIs there, as long as that, you know, you gotta write that right in there.
Oh yeah, and people love regulation. But I, look, I I think that's exactly right. For me, like the thing that, like, it's a hard thing, cause it's all a housing need, right? So it's like, there's no illegitimate need. One of the things I'm really interested in is economic development. And it seems to me that we're losing businesses because they they can't hire people to work them. And that feels like a very acute issue. We're gonna have a real problem with senior housing, but I feel like it's not gonna be solved with more units necessarily. I just don't know, but like, it, I mean, it will, I guess, but like, we had just landed on workforce because of that economic story. But that's precisely the choice. So I don't know what that process looks like, but it feels like the same, should run at the same track as like the town green. And what it could do, you know, like, I wanna make sure we're having that conversation. And maybe that leads to the garage bond and really just kind of how these two things start fitting together. Which is, is what I'm excited to reengage on, cause I've been gone for two weeks. I know that's where we left it last time, but this is fantastic.
Certainly, I like the vision of family housing. Like I think uh we talked about workforce housing, but I know that you can have very useful workforce, you know. Housing by just facilitating families being able to stay in the area. And the the kids are the ones who really want to hopefully work at the market or work like, you know, Lawson's. One of our friends who just went off to college was working at Lawson's all through high school. And it was like extremely hardworking and that could be supporting businesses too, just have high schoolers willing to work and living in town.
I mean, a young couple, a teacher and her significant other, whatever, could be that workforce housing person. You know, that is needed to help keep our restaurants open and and work for Lawson's or whatever.
Yeah, it'd be pretty great teacher housing.
Workforce comes with families, right? And so like, if you can imagine, if there, if like, so we're just trying to do some site specific design. That works with our community. And so there, you can provide the same amount of housing as we've displayed here, but smacked right in the middle of the site, right?
No, I love that people open this.
But if we disperse the housing around in a loop like this and we have this public access screen. Then what happens is, let's say there are families here with children and their their kids naturally. Because they live right below the school, their kids are gonna come home with their friends. And rather than those kids and their friends running through the house and causing mayhem, they could be playing out in the screen. And hang out with everyone, the whole community can have eyes on them and and see, see what they're up to, right? And so it kind of creates this, it's it it's it's designed with the thoughts in mind of like. How people utilize this, the site, like blocking off, we know that the the trucks coming out of here. Every morning impedes on the 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 moms and the dads and the and the parental guardians. Driving their kids to to school in the morning. And so why continue this flow out here when you could use Lewis Pierce Road and have a nice little slow.
That's really interesting.
Slow drive in. They're still connected the same way to all of this infrastructure up here, just in a different way. It's still flowing the same way. Of course. Here, right. And so this provides like a good turning radius for big trucks. You know, like you said, Camilla, there, it's rare that you would ever have one in and out. So there'd be a secondary in and out.
I won't lie, it makes me wonder if we could have the most epic public pool, but maybe that's just a poor. Been a warm summer.
We are turning into a tropical climate.
I I think this is exactly what I would have expected from the two of you, and I think it's a great idea. I I think this is exactly what I would have expected from the two of you, and I think it's a great idea. But I just wanna share that at some point in time, and I had a very long and interesting conversation um, with Aaron Shea of the Shea Brothers, who's been doing work in Waitsfield. And the way he looks at development, I think, might fit into that really well. So at some point.
Let's get him in here.
Okay, that's great.
Who's this Shea of Shea Brothers? I'm not.
Aaron Shea. I'm sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
Oh, the Owens Valley Mean?
And after dogs.
Oh, well, I should know them.
Yeah, he's kinda like, is he kinda stocky guy? Yeah, yeah, he's awesome. He's a really nice guy.
He actually called me because he's had two properties that um, he's looked at here in Warren and he hasn't done anything in Warren. So he wanted to talk to me to find out what the town wants. You know, he wants to say, I wanna find out what the vibe is here, what sounds good, what works good, you know, understand the regulations, that kind of thing. And um, and so, I mean, he was, it was a much longer conversation than I expected, and he's one of those that just kind of goes. He's 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 wound up. He's a highly energetic guy. And it was interesting. Yeah, but he's, he goes, I'm not looking, I'm not a developer who's looking to make a shitload of money. He goes, I need to make profit because I don't wanna go into, he goes, as a matter of fact, I gotta sell something because right now I'm like this, you know? But he he is, he's got a philanthropic side to him, you know, as far as wanting to do good, wanting to do things that make sense. And he has a really good understanding of the numbers and economics. So I told him about this. I said, now, this isn't coming up because we gotta make sure we get through the bond vote and we gotta get that built over there to get them out of there. And we're gonna be doing some feasibility studies to find out what we can and can't do as far as boundaries. But I would love to have him try and come in at a PC meeting and talk with you guys about that because I think that would really appeal to him. And the fact that he can probably make some really good suggestions as far as the construction because he has a really good team of folks that he works with. And knowing that maybe there might be, and I didn't talk to him about this, I'm just talking about this to you guys, that there might be a way that the land, he would wanna purchase, but I'm sure there could be a friendly understanding as to how that was gonna work.
If you if you tried to purchase.
Does that need to be carved out of the larger lot then? So so you would have to, you would have.
It would have to be a subdivision, which.
You said something about two acres. That's what stuck in my mind.
And I don't know.
You said something about two acres and I thought to myself, well, let's see. Quarter acre, that'd be eight lots. You can put a duplex on each lot, that's sixteen.
We may have just said, we may have, then, I don't know if there was a parcel separate at one time. That maybe that's where that came from. Maybe it was just assumed because.
Maybe when Bob was talking about, you know, when we were looking at this, it was, what is that space?
That could be, yeah.
Because there, you know, there's the whole Eaton parcel. I don't know the the detail, but the Eaton parcel has covenants and restrictions on it. You can't build on the Eaton parcel. So I don't know how the Eaton parcel ties into that total seventy acres or whatever, but clearly it wasn't this because we developed.
I just came across the minutes from back in the nineties about when they were looking to build housing in the Eaton Forest.
Yeah, 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 that's restricted.
So anyways, I just thought I'd share that and seeing this, I feel even more confident that I think he could be interested and be somebody you'd consider.
What is the biggest thing he's built so far?
Oh, he has built so many things, so many places. He's not a newbie. Um, and I'll let him tell you all that he's done because I did not take notes in my conversation with him, so.
Anything in the valley that he has?
Well, yeah, he, um, what you see right across from Tremblay on Route one hundred there, those foundations that are put in, that's him.
But is there any finished construction?
No, it's not finished yet, no.
No, is there any finished construction in the valley that he's built?
In the valley?
Yeah, they renovated after box.
He did after us, plus he's renovating the old church that used to be Cabin Fever. No, but he's, yeah.
He's not just a real estate developer, he's a dispensary, is going and navigated that, and that's a whole thing.
If he's renovating the church, everybody should go into that space and look at it before they change it.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely amazing.
Is it? It's it's eight units, he says, he's putting in there.
Is that the Valley Players?
No, 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 the church where the, it's where the stained glass guy.
The stained glass and.
Luminosity, exactly, buried.
Um, and it had these cabin fever quilts, cabin fever quilts and that for a long as time.
Amazing, amazing space.
Yeah, it's a beautiful old building, but it's, the previous owner was, had a lot of deferred maintenance on it. I'm being kind, I'm sure.
So sorry, let me just clarify again. It's the church in Waitsfield?
Across the street, across the street from VG, across the street from. Next to the VG.
It's on the same side.
Oh, same side.
Same side.
It's an old church.
And uh, Valley Players.
Okay, alright.
Like a bunch of stained glass?
Like a snow fence.
I've never been in there.
Yeah, get in there before they check.
Demand an inspection. We're their short-term housing here.
I'll tell you, there's very few people that live in Waitsfield High School before they change that, and that was even more amazing.
So how many units are going up across from Tremblay? Is it two duplexes?
I think, uh, I think it may be a little more than that. He's also looking to maybe put some behind. Uh, but he hasn't gotten the okay from the town of Waitsfield.
Two duplexes?
Uh, well, it it's, I think it's a little more than that, but it may not all be done yet.
The space or the the foundations of their.
Foundations look giant, right?
Again, I didn't write down details. I was just getting a broad brush as to what he was like and similar thing. I mean, I didn't interview him. He was here to ask me questions and so, and he shared with me a lot of the things he's done.
So I don't remember who volunteered to talk to other people.
So I volunteered to get ahold of Roots. Uh, stopped by twice and I can't get on Ben's calendar. So that means either he doesn't want, I don't know, but, um, so pick another developer.
Who was gonna go to Lawson's?
Pick another builder.
Okay, I don't know, but I can go to Lawson's.
Another builder, how about Brothers?
And ask if they wanna.
Brothers has been in this valley forever. Brothers has been here forever.
If they would wanna contribute to employee housing?
Yeah, if they're interested in the site for the future. It's like a long-term plan, so it's not something that we have to get like a yes or a no, right? It's just like, it's not interest.
And if we get a couple of people to do it, you know, then do, wait a minute.
Making, uh, who we were talking about like three years ago and someone said maybe the developers of Mad Bush would be interested in.
That's like the skinny pancake.
Housing, does that sound right? Like, if you're if you're making a, if you're doing like a pub crawl slash asking employers, I don't think that the bartender would really weigh in on that, but I feel like someone at one point was like, oh, the people who are developing Mad Bush might do that.
And this comes back to like, just to to put a, like, um, on the town garage bit about like, a logical question would be if I'm gonna support housing, what kind of housing is gonna be there? And I would imagine most people that work in Mad Bush are renters, right? So it just, it's it's, uh, so even looking at that plan, I'm thinking like, oh, the green's cool, maybe the house is there, but there's like a denser rental, there's a mix. So there, just, I think, before we even get into that, we have to think as a pot, like as a goal, what are we trying to do with that? And I definitely start from a maximalist too, but, you know.
So do different sizes, you're like thinking it'd be more appealing if the ha- if the plan was like different size houses?
When I first started, there was a data plan that was from the Kennedy Advisors of some type. It's part of the Looder revisions, and they estimated the outstanding need for housing at over fifty units for Warren. So that's kind of where I start from. And if there's other numbers, I'm happy to do it, but like, I'm I've just been thinking a lot about the topic of affordable housing and how the need is is outstripping the supply year on year. And at the very least, we have to acknowledge that. Um, but we have to do something differently, and we are. This is really exciting for that reason. I wanna stress that, but like, that's just why I.
Yeah, I think I think if we have like a rough framework of what is capable of being there, like. Then, and then we we generate interest. From that expressed interest, we will gain feedback of what type of housing and what what they are. Who interested is, what what are they looking for? And we can kind of fold that into the mix.
Absolutely. And to be clear, I'm not saying we need to go off trouble, no base, right, on any of these things. This will catalyze even more. Nothing like success that breeds success. What's happening up at the Four Corners too? You know, it's just so cool to see that headline in the paper. It makes people think and find this more feasible too.
Community-based design, yeah.
Very cool.
Um, and I'm really excited about it. Um, so, yeah, we'll see what it holds. Let's just keep, anytime we go to a local establishment and we think that they might need housing for their staff.
But I guess, so back to the, so we we didn't get, we we need a report back from Lawson's, we need a report back from Sugar Bush. Jim, I thought you said, someone said Margot or said.
Oh, actually, I talked to Margot. That's the thing. Yeah, so that was good. Thanks for reminding that. I I talked to Margot and she said, wow, keep me in the loop on that. That sounds amazing.
Just check.
I'll keep ringing their ear on it because I'm going there for, we're doing like a, we're redesigning the snow stakes for Sugar Bush. So I'll be in meeting rooms with the whole, that whole team, so I'll keep drilling them, I'll keep chatting them up on this. So maybe I'll keep the Sugar Bush train going, I'll do deposit, check, uh, security deposit and then.
For their first purchase of a Lawson's.
And then if someone wants to do Lawson's, I'll do Sugar Bush if someone wants to do Lawson's.
Sure, I can ask Lawson's.
Alright, sweet.
Give me, if you give me like your sound bites, I like I, I wanna know how you're talking to Sugar Bush about it.
I don't know.
It's really just, hey, look, we're thinking about this thing, you know? We can't do anything about it because we haven't had the bond vote yet, but we're thinking about what might happen there and wondering if there are some people might wanna partner up with us from the local.
Get in on the ground floor.
Yeah, are you thinking maybe, and I may be, Michelle, oh, sorry, go ahead, Michelle.
Yeah, similar to Jenny, I had a question about approaching employers, which was like, if uh, Lawson's or Sugar Bush or Mr. Owens was to get involved, is the idea that they would own a unit and then rent it to their own employees?
Well, that's about, it's funny you should say that because this is where I was thinking that if if any of them wanted to invest in our eighteen, sixteen, eighteen units, um, allow them maybe only two each, depending of, you know, what the demand is, and that they, um, you know, they provide something as far as getting them built. I don't know.
But yes, I mean, yes or no to Michelle's question?
Yeah, I I don't know.
I would think something like Long Lines, like that would have to be part of the conversation.
A weird model where it's like, we pay you to work here and then you pay us for your living space? I don't know.
Well.
So many people are doing that now.
I I mean, suffice to say, I don't think we're gonna lack for, like, to me, I don't think we're gonna lack for demand for housing of any type. And I think there's going to be people who are more savvy, frankly, at least than I am, like this guy, what was his name again?
Aaron Shea.
Aaron Shea, who like lives in the community and knows how like deals work, who could probably help us give us four different scenarios. Only two of which he's interested in, but like, he lives in the community, so he's gonna tell us about the poor. And like, we can, like, we could sell it for a buck. We could keep our interest, we could, I mean, there's.
We're soliciting offers essentially, like telling.
You have to start with what is your goal. In order to build this kind of housing, that's what we wanna do. To my mind, that is something that the town, at the very least, could agree on in a a vote or some sense of like, this is, this is our intention. That could be something you point to as part of the bond sale. But but I'm just saying, like, it's cool to see it emerging organically already.
So here's an example, with, um, my husband and I applied for a grant for fifty thousand dollars to build an ADU. And that, and the state gave us that in exchange for a covenant that only lasts five years. So similarly with employers, if they wanna contribute, they get a benefit that's finite of like, we'll give you three years of employee housing and like, maybe that'll be enough to get an employee situated. So I, I'm just saying, like, we're soliciting ideas and that's enough for a conversation starter.
Totally, you know, totally, I think so.
Just another idea.
Can you send that to me, that picture?
Can I do what?
Can you email me that picture? And the only reason I want is I wanna look at it as far as a potential subdivision. That's all. I wanna see if there was an original lot or not.
Alright, well.
I gotta get going. Is there anything you guys want me to speak to that?
Is there anything you wanna share?
Any updates?
Um, I can tell you that Sharon, uh, everybody knows who Sharon is, right? Um, from Front Porch, uh, is reviewing the attorney's notes on the Land Use Development Regulations for us. Um, what, so the, the select board has seen the attorney's feedback. Um, we've shared those notes with Sharon because we may need her to weigh in on, you know, the things he says, oh, you need to change this. She might say, no, we don't because of, um, what we are hoping is that the, there weren't a lot of attorney notes, uh, there weren't a lot of attorney comments. Um, what we're hoping is that they are minor enough that any changes the select board would have to make would allow us to just go ahead and warn our public hearing and go through that process without coming back to the PC. If there's anything substantial, then, um, we will have to make those changes and and pass the changes back to the PC so that you guys can change your report that Sharon did for you with those substantial changes. And then we will warn our hearing and go from there. We have between fifteen and a hundred and twenty days uh, to have that hearing once the PC passes the report. I asked Ruth not to pass it officially to us yet so that we don't start the clock running until we hear back from Sharon about whether we're gonna, because because what what happens is as soon as you pass us that report, the DRB has to review everything under a set of conditions. So until we have a little bit better sense of.
That's when, yeah, when you, when you. Well, no, I can pass it to you. It's when you actually warn, my understanding is you actually warn your first meeting.
That, true.
That's, that's when the DRB goes into.
But we have, but when you pass it to us, that sets our timeline.
Right.
Warning our meeting too.
Right, that's true, that's true, yeah.
Might as well understand a little bit better what that, what what that's gonna look like. Um, because, yeah, in the meantime, Sharon can review it. We've all looked at it. So that's the status of the Looters right now. Short-term rental ordinance was passed at the last meeting.
And I sent that to them, I sent that to them at their last.
The fee schedule, um, I I I kinda went through, uh, six or seven ski towns in Vermont. And their fee structures, um, put a recommendation out to the select, like, we'll be assessing that tomorrow night. And hopefully vote on the the fee schedule for that. So that then everybody can start doing their work and grant us, and we can start getting registrations. Registration notices and letters out, get some freaking data. Talking and spending money.
Wait, so is it, so you, is passed?
So the ordinance was passed. I think there's a, there's a thirty-day appeal or something like that, um, now that we've done that.
Okay, and is the final language like on the website or something or?
I sent you, if you're letting the email for tonight's meeting, I sent you a copy of it.
I did not read the attachments clearly, so. And this is something that like, I would have been delighted to see, so I should always read them.
Yeah, please look at it because they do send me on the banner at the top of the website.
It is.
It is, it is, it is. The STR one is up there.
Not the draft, it's the.
It has the date that you approved it.
It does, okay, good.
Well, thanks, Camilla, because you just explained all of agenda topic number five. Granicus, well, Granicus gets going once the ordinance passes.
Right, there's some work being done.
Unless Jim craft, oh, and those.
We talked about posting on Front Porch forum, asking people to, um, turn in their neighbors if they're doing STRs.
Who did the hat?
No, we were joking about, we're kind of ju- but not really, like, everyone needs to get signed up. I, was it kind of a joke, but like, in the last like three media, maybe three meetings ago, we were. in the last like three media, maybe three meetings ago, we were like, you told us the effective rate of what Granicus is finding, and they're like, okay, we're at sixty-six percent or something like that. Like, how can we get a higher percentage, and then if we blast it on Front Porch forum, like, this ordinance has passed, we are at sixty-six percent identification, we know that there is.
But I think the key there is, we, we're gonna send a letter to everybody on the grand list.
Right.
They have to self-identify.
Oh, every person?
Yeah.
Just gonna get a letter, oh, okay.
So.
Every person, LLC.
Every, yeah.
All your friends with LLCs making.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll see how, how well that works.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, I bet it works, I bet it gets us to ninety.
Yeah.
I mean, I think this idea of more transparency about STRs too will be really helpful, just like tax delinquency, and we don't need to like chase people, but just even having a list that shows that people will check.
Yeah.
And I'll be like, what's going on with my neighbors, I'm, what's going on with that house, now there'll be another resource, and if it's not labeled and it seems weird, that'll probably surface itself, right, I think that's sort of the, to me, that feels like a reasonable thing.
This is not punitive, once again, and again, and again.
But it feels punitive for the, as much for mentors that meet the regulations, but, yeah.
Start with getting the data, we're not going into this as we're trying to bust people, we're trying to make STRs go away, we're trying to get data.
I think it's leveling the playing field, if like, if your neighbor has working smoke detectors and whatever else that they need to have for public safety, and then other people aren't doing it, it's just, everybody has to.
Come along with it.
Did, okay, but you haven't, you haven't established the, uh, the registration for that, right?
So the milk can work, milk will eat. So, um, can, can we go back to the Land Use Development Regulations for one quick sec?
Amazing, I didn't start it.
What's the best case scenario with that?
I haven't had dinner, so.
Best case scenario would be.
No, somebody else can have this anyways.
Um, we already had two pieces. We have to warn, say, Sharon. Say, say, just the, the feedback we get from Sharon is that the changes that the attorney wants to make are all minor, and, and so there's, there's no biggie, it doesn't have to come back to, back to the.
And the items on the, the map are minor.
Um, if that happens, then we have to warn, uh, hearing, we, we make those changes, and then we warn a hearing for fourteen days.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Fifteen days.
Yeah.
Fifteen.
Okay.
Okay, fifteen days, um.
Fourteen is the other one.
At that meeting, we take public comment, if there's nothing substantial that needs to change, then my understanding is, we can go ahead and vote to accept the Looters. I don't know what.
And then there's a, then there's a twenty day appeal period.
Twenty day.
During which a certain percentage of the, uh.
The voters.
The voters want to appeal.
Yeah.
What's that percentage, just off?
I think it's five percent of the voting roll, which is somewhere around seventy some odd people, last I heard.
No way.
Five percent?
That would never happen.
So.
No, you'll go through, I don't think that many people.
Best case scenario, a month and a half. Best case scenario.
I'm, I'm saying it's gonna be, I'm saying it's gonna be October.
Ice, it's not ice, buddy.
Jim, okay, okay, you wanna make a bet?
Yeah, I know, I know, are you kidding me?
I, I will say, bless her soul for Sharon for doing this, but, again, we're, we're waiting for other people, we had to wait for the attorney.
I know, I understand.
It's been two weeks for Sharon, she was on vacation.
I'm not, I'm not blaming anybody.
Oh, no, 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 I'm not saying, I'm just letting you all know that she said, last week she would look at it, so I kind of nudged her a little bit today, so, you know, we're, we're at the mercy.
Yeah.
And everybody else does do things to do too in their life, so.
Yeah.
We'll just keep on loving.
Alright, well, thanks for being with us.
Thank you, thanks again for the.
Great information.
Oh, thanks for the key.
The town garage stay, I'm, I'm out of town next week.
Okay, okay, I'm on it, I'm on it next week.
And I'm all out of town next week also.
I'm here.
So what's the, the timing of the vote, I mean, this is one of the things.
November sixth.
November sixth.
Yeah, election day.
And I don't mean to keep, keep you, sorry, but I just, when I, the last meeting I was at, I remember thinking, I'm leaving for two weeks, and I need to like, get back up to speed, and like, start flapping for this, and frankly, this come, this whole meeting, it makes me even more excited to get the bond passed, right, because of the story behind it.
But we have a lot of, that, that's the meeting that we're trying to pull together, is the communications piece of that, the.
Yeah, when's your next meeting, public meeting on the garage, isn't there one in September?
This is what, we don't, we don't have a plan for that, we want to have it in September, gotta try, that group is trying to get together and figure out all the things we need to do to get the word out there, and what these meetings are gonna be.
Everybody's been away.
Yeah.
You know, it's a sad time of year.
With that being said, kids, before you all leave, Adam, you can leave your show, Adam?
Yes.
Before you adjourn, or when you do adjourn, but before everybody walks out, since I'm gonna be out next week, and your meeting is on Monday the eighth, I need to put together some sort of an agenda by Thursday morning of this week, that Becky will then post for me while I'm gone, because I'm not gonna be back until Sunday, before the, until the seventh. So, I need to know what you want on the agenda, because I'm kind of at a loss at the moment.
For the next planning commission meeting, what would you like on the agenda?
Exactly.
Uh, do I, do I have to figure that out right now, can I sleep on it?
No, no, but if any one of you has any suggestions.
Yeah.
Between now, today's Monday night, by Wednesday afternoon.
Getting this guy from Waitsfield.
Yeah, yeah, would love to.
If I can get him in here, I don't know.
Maybe you can, you know, try.
Okay.
I think it'd be cool to hear, you know, a guy who's actually doing the stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
He might say, you guys are living in fantasy land.
Well.
Sure.
The very least, we can get him plugged into wind down Wednesday.
Yeah, sure. Free free rolls.
Okay.
Free rolls out into the crowd.
And let me also find out what, uh, what the latest is with Sam, of member of Planning District, some of our feasibility stuff.
Also, by that time, we ought to know from Sharon, whether she's, what kind of, um, uh, implications the legal stuff has had, so we'll know.
From what I understand from Rebecca, when I, she told me, because a lot of it was really just, it was, it was individ, it was, it was the way it was written, it wasn't any content.
You know, update, who does.
Yep, yep, yep.
I think if we're, if we're doing the wind down again, then maybe we can discuss what our town presence will be for the next event. We had Jim Manning the, the, the table, uh, with the grand list and the town garage, what do we want to present to the public for the next event? How do we want to? Traffic?
Yeah.
Slowing down the traffic.
Or divisioning that, the, the vision drawn.
Okay. Well, it's not October yet, Jim.
Think about.
Comes late to me, it still gives me a hard time.
Prior to the bond, you're gonna, we want, we, we need to get in front of traffic.
Yeah.
Right, one guy, there's one guy who lives on Gold Bond Road, what's the name of the road?
Gold Hill, off the.
No, the, the little road that comes.
Trout?
Trout, Trout Hollow.
Yeah, lives on Trout Hollow, second place in a college, and I'm not doing this until you guys deal with this.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so let's have a meeting on that, yeah.
He spoke, we had some folks that came in front of the DRB, and he was one of them, Rocky is his name.
Oh, no, not Rocky. This was not Rocky, this is another guy, Rocky Blair I know, you know, he's there every time we have a town garage meeting.
It wasn't Tim Holter, was it?
No.
Okay.
No.
I have another topic for, uh, I think we're, so, just to add to the conversation, if we're having like Aaron Shea come in, and we're just like crowdsourcing ideas for what to do about the town garage site, um, I've been doing closings for National Bank of Middlebury, and they've been talking about, um, how they're working with the Vermont Housing, I think it's VHF A, on the, they've built like forty-five houses in Middlebury, Stonecrop Meadows, and they've, something about that has just been like closing, they've been really busy on that, and I haven't been trying to figure out what that is, because it's just like in passing, um, it's come up, but has anyone heard about how that housing project should like try to get someone from the bank to tell us how it's going, and the funding and what's being built.
This is Vermont Housing Finance Agency.
Yes.
My office used to be in Middlebury, I still get the Addison County Independent, Middlebury's building like three hundred new houses.
Okay.
I mean, it's really, they're really building a lot of stuff.
Want a lender to come in and talk to us about it, about the project, I mean, is that useful, maybe I should ask her more if she thinks it's useful to talk to a town about, about like other housing projects and how they're financing them.
I don't know whether that's being done by, like, two hundred, two hundred units are being done by, I think, a developer there, I, I don't know, that's pretty big.
I might just ask her, just to tell me who's involved, yeah.
They're doing a lot of housing over there.
Yeah, for who, who is buying the housing, you know, families and everything.
A whole bunch of other stakers that are turning into SCR. I don't know.
No, it's missing middle, she's calling a missing middle, it's middle income housing, that's definitely what the project is, middle income housing, but I'll ask for more, if it's, I'll just circulate it, if it's.
Yeah, let me know.
Yeah, if some, if I think it's interesting and you guys are interested, then maybe.
Okay, thank you, you just answered my question.
Rich college students.
Okay, so are we on new and other business?
I'm missing middle.
Yes.
Is this a place where I can maybe plug another event that's happening in the valley, so, Yes Tomorrow is having a all weekend on Saturday, they're having like a open house alumni kind of gathering, but it's open for all and everyone, there's gonna be food trucks and DJ sets and music.
Time on that.
Uh, I don't know, but there's a, there's a banner, there's a banner, there's a, um.
Like five to eight or something?
I think it's fi, I think it's, I can figure it out.
You can't promote this unless you give us details.
Okay, well then, never mind, and then.
Is it this weekend though, is that what we're saying?
Yes, yes, look at the flyer that I just posted at the East Warren Community Market.
Sunday, Sunday they're having a fancy dinner, fundraising dinner, but Saturday they're having an open house, it's free.
Fancy dinner on Sunday, if you want to support, uh, uh, it goes towards like scholarships for our students and things like that, and keeps things running, so it's, it's really great if you could support it. But support us any way you can, for free or with fancy dinner, um, that's all I have.
Okay, anybody else, anything else?
Okay.
Um, what was the, so last Monday was, or last Tuesday, there was another garage meeting, did you already go over everything that was talked about at that meeting? The town garage, like development or bond vote, it was a bond vote meeting on the town garage, and I missed it.
Not last Tuesday.
Last week.
No, did not happen. Not that I know of, um, it was on everybody's calendar, but it got canceled.
Good, okay, so I didn't miss anything, thank you, that's all, didn't miss it.
One thing that's happened since then, right, is the DRB meeting on the town garage. Both Jim and I went to the DRB meeting, and, and the, I, I'm pretty sure the DRB is all in favor of it, but they have to go through their, you know.
They gotta dot eyes and cross tees and make sure, like, you know.
Yeah, they, they did that.
They gotta follow the rules.
Yeah, so they did that, and it's not, you know, the, the group of five people who are against the garage.
There's five people who came out against the garage?
Well, Mary Gal, Rocky Blair and his wife, Peter Hayes and his wife, you know, they're the, they're, they're the people who are being most profoundly affected by it. And they, you know, we're at the meeting and raising all these objections and things like that, and talking about the traffic, and how horrendous the traffic is, and how unsafe it is, and traffic, 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 and, you know, that frankly, the select, the DRB and the select would both feel like the traffic issue is an issue, we need to deal with it, but it's separate from the town garage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, Devin was very good about talking about traffic, and the DRB did ask for more details, because we have the, the folks from VHB, they did ask them for more detailed traffic information.
They, they asked for some water management and some driveway slopes and things like that, but it's just right what the DRB does, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, Jeff is following the, the stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, the checklist that they're supposed to follow.
Yeah.
I just, that's, the, like, the Waitsfield Town Garage is on a quiet road, I don't understand why it's different, is it different, is the, the suggested site different somehow than like just any other residential area? In terms of the Waitsfield Town Garage, trucks are coming out onto Tremblay, like, they're near an intersection, it's.
It's not any different from coming where it is now.
Yeah, so it's, it exists, it's a problem that exists and it.
Yeah, I have a question of Andrew.
You don't, you don't have to, you have to make a case with us.
Yeah, but that's, there's not, there's not a nuance here, it's just trucks come out on the driveway and people don't like it.
You, you, that's not quite true.
Yeah.
I mean, they, the, the people who object to this, see that as a, as their only route to, you know, to really, to stopping it, you know. They say the traffic is really unsafe, really, you know, we're just waiting for an accident to happen, you know, they're going through it, and everybody who's looked at it says, wow, this is much better, sight-wise and every other way, than, than where it is now. So, of course, what will happen is we'll move the garage, and somebody will come down that hill, and somebody will smash into them on day two or something like that.
See, the thing is, and I had a conversation with Andrew, and one thing you have to think about is right now, they are on a relatively regular basis, maybe not every day, maybe only once or twice a day, going between two locations, once they're moved over there, that's one location, they'll be coming over here if they have to work over here, otherwise, they're gonna be on the other side of one hundred. The fact they're right on one hundred is ideal.
Yeah.
And the effect on the neighborhood around them is not all that bigger or different than what has been happening here in the village.
Yeah.
It's much better. Hundred times better, none of those trucks drive by the houses in the village, but, I mean, it's ridiculous.
But, to be, you know, following the letter of law, like Jeff is gonna do, we need the numbers, we need that table that says, there are this many, you know, it drives out fifteen times, it goes east four times, it goes west eleven times, and then underneath it, you need to say, okay, well, it changed, it changes like this when it's over there. And those numbers aren't written down, and so we can talk about, yeah, you gotta pull out all the way and stuff like this, but the real details behind that, it needs to be more than a traffic memo, it needs to be a traffic study, you really need to do that, which is fine, just do it.
And Jenny, if you are available, they're gonna be back, VHB with the DRB on September fifteenth.
Okay.
It's actually worth going to the meeting to see what's, what happens. September fifteenth?
Yes.
It's fun to watch Jeff.
Well, Jeff, uh, Jeff will be remote that night, Jeff will be remote that night, and hopefully Chris Bane will be here.
He stood at it. What's it, who's the other guy that used to do, Peter?
Peter.
Alright, I'm gonna take another stab, the Yes Tomorrow thing, the free thing is on Saturday, the thirtieth, from four till nine PM.
Nice.
Ally Rude will be showing a portion of her Design Build movie.
At what time?
Sometime between four and nine PM, I don't know exactly when, just gotta stay tuned, there'll be music, there'll be food, wood-belly pizza and bar. Follow us on Instagram, so you know more stuff.
Are you part of that movie?
I'm in the movie, yes.
He's a star.
Well, we gotta, so we need a special showing against.
Yeah.
Against the library.
Yeah.
From the.
That's right, that could be one of our first movies.
At the wind down, I, that's, that's my first.
Excellent idea. I'll talk to Ally, maybe she'll be interested, she's gonna be busy in New York City, and LA, and Tokyo, and wherever else she's going.
The war green.
And war, and war green, and war than war green. Yeah, so why not, cool, alright, so is that all for new and other business, are we ready to conclude this meeting?
Yeah.
So what do I have to do to conclude it, say, all those in favor? All those in favor of concluding this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I agree with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Second to second.
Uh.
At eight thirty-three.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, everyone.
Here's your pencil, Jim, thank you.
Thank you for everybody turning up.
Thank you, Carol.
I was so busy doing it, didn't check. Ended up with six, yeah.